That's the way to start the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's workshop meeting, Monday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, near the year, near the month, didn't know the date. Um, we thank you for being a part of our city council, our city government at workshop meetings. We discuss issues but do not take formal action on items. Agenda packets are available on the city's website at uh, www.pasco-dashwa.gov backslash agenda. For those present, as you walk in that small table to your right, under that sign that not surprisingly says agendas. This meeting is uh, being televised live on PSC TV, channel one-nine-one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting videos available also on the city's website. Uh, lastly, the public may submit comments and or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Barajas?
She is en route. She'll be here momentarily, so we'll circle back if she gets here.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, Blaisdell, Mayor. Councilmember Grimm?
Here.
Councilmember Harpster?
Present.
Councilmember Peralis?
Here.
Mayor Protan Milne?
I'm present.
And Mayor Serrano?
I am present. Like I said, councilmember Roz, God willing, makes it here safely, but she said she'll be here soon, so. If you all please stand with me, uh, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll move on to item number four, which is verbal reports from council members. Anyone have anything to report on from this week? Uh, Mayor Protan Milne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had a very busy week. Um, I had a budget meeting with city staff on Wednesday. Um, I also did the Moon Security mural unveiling with, um, Councilwoman Blanche Barajas and Leo Peralis, and it was really good to see local students put up murals in downtown Pasco. Really good work if you ever get a chance, drive by Moon Security. And then on Saturday, I did go out to Maddox Dog Training Academy, uh, by Altopia, I think it was, and just got a big tour of the facility and got to see some of the dogs that were deemed dangerous, but uh, got a chance to play with them and uh, give them some love. And uh, then it was cool to see the program they got for veterans. They said so far they've uh, been able to um, basically match a dog with a veteran, and usually the dog picks the veteran. So they said sometimes dogs will not, you know, move to that veteran, and so they'll go through a cycle, and finally the dog will pick who his uh, new master is gonna be, so it was real good. And then I was at the privilege of uh, also with uh, Councilwoman Blanche Roz and Councilwoman Grimm, and uh, we did the thing on uh, different uh, traffic calming sessions this afternoon. And so for about two and a half hours, we took time out of our day to get more in-depth reports, and I think we learned some good information. I appreciate staff putting that together for us, and uh, it was really good. That's my week.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Mr. Peralis?
Appreciate it, Mayor. Um, yeah, I also attended the Moon Security mural unveiling. That was really cool. We had a lot of good artists, um, here in our school district, so it was really cool to see, um, Mike Miller showcase his uh, his wall for that. It sounds like there's gonna be more, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, also, uh, attended the Chihuahua varsity football game. Um, they beat Hermison Bulldogs fifty-six to zero. So that was really cool to see, and then um, catch the end of the Pasco Bulldogs game over in Kennewak, but they lost forty-four to seven. Um, also tried out a new restaurant on Route sixty-eight, so just trying to support some of our local businesses. Um, it's called Boyle's El Rey. Um, really, really good, um, chicken. They uh, they cook it um, kind of like Sinaloa style from Mexico. So yeah, it was really, really good, and uh, it was really packed, so, um, yeah, you guys should go try that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralis. Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, um, Friday I attended the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. Um, couple big takeaways from that is went over the regional bicycle plan and then also approved the twenty-twenty-five regional transportation priorities. I appreciate Director Sarah advocating to the TAC Board, the Technical Advisory Committee, that actually votes and recommends to the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, and we were able to get the Road Seventy-Six as one of those six regional, um, projects with prior prioritization to, um, hopefully get, um, some money from outside of our area to help relieve some congestion in West Pasco. So thanks again for Director Sarah and her staff.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Ms. Roz?
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies for the tardiness this, this evening. Um, I do also wanna highlight real quick something that, um, Protan, uh, Milne already mentioned was the mural, but I wanna highlight the names of the three individuals that won. Um, two from Chihuahua High School, Ella Lerman and Aliyah Mahaffey. Uh, their artwork is out there displayed, and the third one, uh, from Pasco High, and a, a, a young lady that, um, I, I had the privilege of, of speaking in front of the soccer team, and she's part of the soc- she was part of the soccer team, Sahara Acevedo. Each one of these three will be receiving a one-thousand-dollar scholarship. So, thank you again for displaying the, the art, uh, Moon Security, but again, thank you to the three young ladies, uh, for putting themselves out there and, and sharing their art. Um, also wanna mention real quick that I did attend the State of the Downtown on the eighteenth, Wednesday the eighteenth. Um, Mr. Thomas Grumbow was there. I don't know if you missed anything going on downtown, but uh, thank you to staff for presenting that and sharing the updates for downtown. There was a lot of feedback. And, um, so I know the community is anxious to see the completed projects and, uh, moving forward, what other plans are happening in downtown. Um, on Thursday, again, it was the, the unveiling of the, uh, of the mural. Um, and again, this evening, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Grimm and Mr. Milne, attended the, um, possible ways to calm, uh, our traffic and how to safely achieve uh, a successful and healthy and safe, uh, transition between places, work, uh, and schools for our citizens. So, uh, glad to be part of that, and that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Ms. Roz. Uh, Mr. Milne?
Yeah, sorry, I did forget one important thing. On Friday night, I did attend the concert, the Melissa Fent, which was with, uh, Copa. We had the singer Mariana, uh, came from Kalima to sing, and it was also put on by the Mid-Columbia Master, uh, master singers, and we actually have one of the singers in the audience, former councilwoman Rebecca Francic back there, and so I got to hear her sing, and it was really good. I was actually very impressed. And uh, it was a great night out, and uh, for all who got to go to Saint Paul's Episcopal Church, it was a great event, and hopefully we'll have more like that in the future. And uh, again, it was better than I expected, and again, the singing, everything was really good. Uh, it was really entertaining, and it was actually quite moved really quick, and uh, it was something I would recommend if you ever get a chance to go, uh, go attend one of those. So, thank you.
That's on me. I can't read right from left. Uh, thank you, Mr. Milne. Thank you all for, uh, your attendance at these activities. Today I attended Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee meeting, and uh, one of the most exciting things, I think I mentioned this, looking at doing some municipal grants, and uh, we're winnowing down, uh, awarding some of those, so I think that's, that's really bodes well from some of our especially smaller municipalities and some of the larger ones too. So, it's always fun to be part of a board where we actually use, uh, money coming from Hanford for, you know, the area. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item number five, which is items for discussion with public opportunity for public comment. You may recall, uh, previously in our workshop meetings, we didn't allot time for public comment on any of the upcoming, I believe, if I can count, uh, A through G is seven, I think, upcoming seven issues. Uh, with our new format, we do allow for up to eight minutes of public comment. They are limited to two comments per side, either pro or con, uh, at two minutes each. So, there will be no more than aggregate of two comments per side. Uh, and again, they can go the duration of the two minutes as provided by our timer. So with that, we've got item A, five A, that is, presentation of Pasco School District. Looks like, uh, Mr., I'm just kidding, Ms. Igdel, you're gonna, uh, introduce the Pasco School District staff, including Ms. Whitney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening council. Uh, we have today, uh, in our audience and walking up to the podium, uh, our Pasco School District Superintendent. Uh, they have a strong commitment to education and student access, and Michelle has been an instrumental leader in driving progress within the district. And, uh, school district has over twenty-five schools overall, uh, as well as four virtual learning, um, um, opportunities, which actually I was not aware of, and uh, she'll be, uh, talking about all of the programs within the school district, and, um, and excited to hear all about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. It is truly an honor and pleasure to be here. I have to admit, I'm used to presenting to my board, but when I looked on my calendar today and saw it was city council, I've been a little nervous today. So, I do have a couple of district staff members with me tonight. I do wanna recognize, uh, Planning Principal Seth Johnson. He's our planning principal for our new high school, Orion. And then Assistant Superintendent Rubel Satal is also with me this evening. So it is truly an honor and pleasure to make the presentation. Go to the next slide. Down button?
Uh, you can do the arrow on the keyboard, or we can do it over here as well.
Thank you. So the, uh, focus of my presentation tonight is really around, uh, career and technical education, and our commitment in Pasco School District to preparing students for a future they choose. But some context before I get started, um, we serve nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two students in twenty-five schools, tuned to be twenty-seven, seventeen elementary, four middle, four high, and four virtual learning opportunities. Uh, in the fall of twenty-twenty-five, we will have, um, six high schools. We have almost three thousand employees split almost evenly between certified and classified, who are dedicated every day to meeting the needs of those two hundred and fifty-two, or nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two students. When you look at our demographic, you can see that almost seventy percent of our students qualify for free and/or reduced lunch. Uh, thirty-three-point-seven percent of our kids meet the state's definition of English language learner. However, fifty-six percent of our students come to us already speaking another language other than English, and we have just under thirteen percent of our students who take advantage of some form of special education services. The average in the state is a little over thirteen percent, I think, thirteen-point-five percent, so we're just under the state average for our students in special education. In Pasco, we embrace language as an asset, and so we have six bilingual programs. So if you're a student who's a, and your home language is English, you can start a, a journey to becoming bilingual in kindergarten and be supported K-12. If you're a student whose home language is Spanish, the same can happen. If you're a newcomer to our country, regardless of where, when, when, what year you come to us, we have programs for you, all with the end result of being truly bilingual. Um, we have almost, or a little over twenty-one-hundred students enrolled in that program. We actually have the largest dual-language program in Washington State, and that was by design. Seventy-six percent, or seventy-six of our students, uh, earn what is called the seal of biliteracy, so they graduate with special recognition from the state in having, being able to master both languages, and they have to pass a test in order to qualify for that special recognition. We commit to five outrageous outcomes that when combined create a trajectory of success for our students, where they read on grade level in third grade in their language of instruction. We want them to pass algebra by the end of ninth grade. Some do that in seventh, some do it in eighth, but we want all of our students to do that by the end of ninth grade. We want all of our ninth graders on track for graduation at the end of ninth grade. That ninth grade year is really important. It can be predictive of whether or not children drop out. So if they're on track, they're more likely to stick out that four years with us and come to the end, not only graduating, but graduating with a career path. And that's what I wanna amplify tonight is the work that we do around that. We also really harness those four goals I just talked about around one-hundred percent of our students experiencing meaningful connections and hope for our future. That goal was heavily influenced actually by our students. They came to me and asked me for a goal that was more, um, heavily embedded around relationship. I had asked them about my five outrageous outcomes. Do you guys like these goals? They're not, like, no miss, one's missing. We need you to fix that fifth one. We needed to say something about connections. So that goal is one our students asked us for, and we're happy to deliver on that promise every day. So directly connected to our outrageous outcome around graduation, just graduating isn't enough for us. We wanna graduate with a college or career, or a career path, a hope or dream in the center of a child's plan. And we do that through very robust high school and beyond planning. And I don't know about you, but when I was in high school, I graduated with high school and didn't know what I wanted to do. I got to college and didn't have a plan. So certainly, um, our goal is every student who leaves our system has a dream for themselves, and maybe even took some steps while they were with us to get there, but certainly have a trajectory into whether it's career and technical edu- or college and technical training, or career or life. We want them to be prepared, and it is about a future they choose. And we don't judge that choice, whether it's four-year, two-year, university, technical training, or just right into the world of work. What we want them to do is have a hope or dream for themselves and be able to enter into the world of work in a job where they can sustain a lifestyle that they would, um, that they hope for themselves and be a contributing member of our community. Every day in Pasco is career day. Some of you may remember when you were in school and there was a day of the year where a bunch of businesses came in and they talked to you about the different jobs, and that happened once, and then those people left, and then you went back to, you know, doing the, the work of, of high school. Every day for us is career day, and certainly we value those career days as part of that trajectory, but we also have, uh, very robust community outreach. Each of our schools has what's called a community manager, whose role and function is to be building relationships with our local business industry, and so that the education that we're offering our students is meeting the needs of our local business partners. No business in Pasco should have a vacancy. I have a student in, in our school district right now who's yours next employee, and we do that by partnering with you. We also offer work-based learning. Um, we have career graduation pathways that I'll talk about, um, in the next couple slides. We offer opportunities for career exploration and have a very robust offering of career and technical education classes, um, that I will also highlight. So we have forty-four different CTE graduation pathways in these sixteen career clusters. So you can see in the graphic, these are all of the different career clusters that we have in Pasco, and students can take classes under those career clusters. So a number of years ago, Washington State decided that every student, um, had, had to earn two credits in a career path, and it is a legitimate pathway to graduation. So we could have looked at that as just a compliance, like the state said we have to do it, so we're gonna check the box and make that happen, and we can say we're done with that compliance requirement. But what we know is this is really the heart of educating students to be prepared for a future they choose. So we've created this really robust set of offerings where students could get really excited about a certain career cluster and explore that why they're with us. So our goal is to provide a menu of opportunities for students to add to their diploma, including specialized work training, career pathways, college credits, work-based learning in industry credentials. So we have sixteen CTE courses that are articulated, um, meaning we have agreements with our community colleges, um, so that students, the classes that they take with us not only earn them high school credit, but also earn them college credit, and it gives our students a leg up as they look at going on to, um, either two-year or four-year university, and it's a cost savings for our parents because that, that, um, college tuition is paid for, um, while they're in high school. We have over twenty-five college and the high school classes, so those classes or classes are offered right on our high school campus. Students don't have to leave and go to Columbia Basin College or Washington State University. They can stay right in their home high school and earn both high school and college credits. And then we also have AP courses, which is, um, like they had those when I was in school. That's, I think, more what kind of we're used to seeing, but we have this, uh, set of offerings that go beyond that now and meet students', um, needs. We also have thirty-five industry-recognized credentials, um, that we offer, which, and you can see there a picture of the for- forklift, forklift certification is one of those. Um, and again, it just gives our students a leg up as they go out into the world of work when they have these certifications that they learn from us. Their resumes can kind of bubble to the top as, uh, the next employees that are hired in our community. So we make meaningful connections through not only our coursework but student-led organizations, and here's a, a picture of a few. We have, um, DECA and FCCLA, uh, we have FFA, um, and then the, we have a robotics club, the, the picture there circled in purple. Um, those young, young people won a state champion around their robot, or championship around their robot. So, um, and then we also offer, um, a sports medicine. That, that group of students has a student-led organization or club as well. So it's not only about what happens in the four corners of our classroom, but extending that to extracurricular activities as well, and students get really excited and engaged about those opportunities. So we're in the process of developing, uh, signature programs for each of our schools. So as we envision next year, as we're opening, um, Sageview High School but and Orion High School, we wanted each of our comprehensive high schools to have a signature program. Um, and then also, we believe so deeply in this pathway-based learning that Orion High School, the entire academic programming there is around pathways. So at Orion, there'll be health services and engineering manufacturing pathways, where students who are interested in that pathway can opt-in and choice into Orion. And along that pathway, for example, in human and health services, there would be careers where they could leave right from high school, having earned some college credits while they were at high school, go right into the world of work with advanced certification, making, um, into a high-demand, high-paying job that again could be a sustainable wage for them, and they can then be in that, um, that, that profession and give back to the community, or they may be off to two years or four years of college beyond high school to, uh, attain an advanced degree. We really want to honor that continuum of right into the world of work or to college as equally as important to the student who's choosing it, and we value it, value it equitably in our system as well. So agriculture science signature program will be at Sageview, and then we're making decisions now about where law and justice and computer sciences will land. Um, but there'll be one each at Pasco High and then Chihuahua High School. But the goal is for each of the comprehensive high schools to have a signature program. Um, and then Orion would have human and health services and engineering and manufacturing. This is in addition to a very robust set of career and technical education classes as, um, as illustrated by those career clusters. So all of the high schools will have those offerings. In addition, they'll have these signature programs. So partnerships are key, and I thought this might be of interest to the council. Um, when we do this work, it requires that we do it in partnership with industries within our community, and that can be on a continuum of things that are high or low intensity for our industry partners or higher intensity. So low-intensity type activities would be to come and be a classroom speaker, participate in roundtable discussions, be an advisory council member. So each of our career and technical education classes has an advisory group, which is critically important to ensuring that the, uh, what we are doing within the academic setting aligns with what industry needs our students to learn. So if CAD is not the right thing for our, our students to be learning anymore, industry would tell us that, and we would pivot and move toward the thing that industry needs us to do, is just one example. Um, so that is a way that industry partners can get engaged and involved with the school district. That's pretty low, a low lift for an industry partner. Kind of a moderate intensity is to allow job shadowing or for students to come and tour your industry. Um, maybe do a flipped internship where instead of inviting students to be in your places of business, um, you come to their class and do, uh, a, an internship activity, um, or doing, uh, teacher externships where we have teacher professional development, and maybe teachers come and visit that business and get some professional development in that way. The highest intensity level is to be a part of like a capstone experience or offer to paid internship, or even maybe non-paid internships, um, or to accept student apprenticeships into your businesses. So I offer that partnership to say we have many business partners who are participating along this continuum, and we always invite new partnerships. So if you or anyone you know is interested in partnering with Pasco School District, we would certainly, uh, gladly accept that, that, that offering. Um, just get in contact with me, and I can get you connected to the right people. So with that, that concludes what I brought here tonight to present to you. Again, just, uh, an opportunity to amplify the work that we're doing in Pasco, especially that that I thought would be of interest to the council. I'm happy to entertain questions if that's appropriate, and I'm happy not to if it's not. So, thank you.
Well, we appreciate your time, the effort you put into this. Uh, very succinct, uh, very well laid out. Uh, questions are definitely appropriate. Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Whitney, for coming and presenting to us. I really appreciate you trying to connect students to career paths too. I think, you know, even way back when, when I went to high school, I think there is a, you know, big disconnect, so I really appreciate the efforts in doing that. Um, just wanted to ask you, you know, one of the things I've just seen a lot in the news lately is over proficiency standards. And it's not just Pasco, you know, and it's not even just Washington. It just seems to be across the spectrum, and just really, you know, I guess what do you think is driving that? First of all, you know, is it home? Is it too high of standards? Is it, you know, how are we missing that mark so much? And then what are, what is Pasco School District doing specifically to combat those low proficiency standards?
No, thank you for the question. So the proficiency standards that are most talked about, like in the newspaper and in the news, are a singular data point, which is the SBA. So in our community, fifty-six percent of our kids come to us with another language. Thirty-three point, or thirty-seven-point-seven percent of those, um, students are English language learners. The test is given in English. So for us, that is a, a critical piece of data that we look at. So we then rely on other data sources to, to disaggregate our data and look at it through student groups. So when you look at our data through the lens of different student groups, the students who come to us already knowing English, come to us, um, performing like a five-year-old in kindergarten and stay with us until they're tested, are doing really well on the state test. The places where students are needing more support, um, almost forty to forty-five percent of our students are coming into our system performing as three-year-olds or below. So early learning becomes very important for us, and investing in pre-K and looking at creative ways to do that. Um, the other demographic that struggles on that state test are kids who come to us, for example, um, as of, in third grade, um, as, or in second grade, and then they're tested in third grade. Um, when they don't start with us, it's harder for us to leverage improvement for them on the third grade test, for example. Um, what you do notice when you look at our scores through an entire systems trajectory is even though we have a much higher percentage of students come, coming into our system performing under a five-year-old's, um, level, our students make faster growth than the state, and we graduate kids right, almost right around the state's, uh, graduation rate. So to really tell the story, you have to look at multiple data points and look at the system and its trajectory of kind of what happens for kids as they come in, and are they making growth year after year, and then exiting our system, you know, graduating and then graduating with a plan beyond high school. But it is a, a complex conversation, and certainly we're always looking at data, and we know that we have work to do, and we double down on those efforts every year.
Appreciate that. No, and just being in charge of such a massive organization like you are, I just wanna ask you, what keeps you up at night? What's your biggest?
Today? Um, to be honest, this last week, what's been keeping us up at night are ensuring that we're being very responsive to, um, concerns around safety and what districts, and I'm sure you're seeing this newspaper, what districts across our nation are experiencing right now is a, a higher-than-normal, um, reports of people overhearing threats to schools. Um, we have what's called an incident command structure, and anytime there's a critical incident that occurs, we, we come in my office, we get what we call the red phone out, and we, we, um, staff that incident from beginning to end. We probably spent, you know, of the sixty hours we all worked last week, I would say two-thirds of that time in incident command responding to those kinds of concerns. Um, so right now, that's what's keeping me up at night. Um, we just seem to be getting an above-normal number of those, and we run every single one of those down from beginning to end. And so we will continue to investigate until we find the source of the rumor and confirm it's a rumor. So you can imagine how much time, energy, and effort that takes and the amount of manpower, but it's the only way that we feel comfortable and confident that our kids are safe daily.
I appreciate that, yeah, and that's, um, I appreciate that being at the, the forefront of your, your mind at the same time. Thanks for your commitment to our kids and the commi- community.
Of course. It's an honor and a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm and Ms. Roz.
Quick question. Um, twenty-five schools, nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two students, and as I'm looking through your slides, um, at the very bottom, seventeen elementary schools, four middle schools, four high schools, four virtual learning opportunities. Can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. So the virtual learning opportunities were actually, so we've had, um, what we call IPAL. That, that particular virtual learning opportunity has been in place since, uh, twenty-ten. I was in HR at the time when that, that, that program was, uh, developed. When the pandemic came, it was very clear to us that there were certain, um, innov- Um innovations that we put in place during the pandemic that were really speaking to our families and so. Two of those um stayed in place because of that, we have an offering called Pixel. Which is a variation of what kids experienced during the pandemic where there's an online teacher. And the teacher spends time engaging with kids virtually. Um and those students are receiving Pasco School District's. Programming, so it's almost, it's like you're sitting in a classroom in Pasco School District, only it's virtual. And then P three was our other offering, which our community had been asking us for. Well before I was superintendent and that's more of a parent partnership, where parents are in control of the learning, they um. Collaborate with us and choose from a menu of curriculum materials they wanna use. And but that also was, that had been an ask and during the pandemic, we had to really double down around that, so. Um and then we also then expanded IPAL to have another kind of area of it, so it it kind of took a new. Look after the pandemic as well. Um so like I said, there were things that we learned in the pandemic that helped us innovate. And the community also told us that there were those innovations that they wanted us to keep in place. And so we're really proud to offer all four, we're the only district in Washington State that offers a bilingual component or a dual language component online. Um and that's based on our community's needs, they asked us for that and we're we're honored to um to continue to offer that, so. It was an evolution of a very uh difficult time for all of us, but. There were bright spots and and certainly some silver linings around innovations that we're now able to keep and offer to the community.
Effect and just one more question and a comment, how many students do you have in this, in these opportunities?
I was slightly afraid you were gonna ask me that question, um I can find out, I don't, I can't, honestly, I can't remember off the top of my head, I knew that number at one point, but.
No problem, that's perfect.
But I can get that for you.
Perfect, and then just one last comment, we're talking, we're looking, as we're looking through your, the presentation, we're talking about the opportunities for. Community members, businesses, mentors, people to come in and talk to the students. So I'm gonna put it out there, October eighteenth, mock interviews, if you want to participate, I've done this in the past and it's super fun. Mock interview is happening at Chihuahua High School between seven thirty AM and two thirty PM, October eighteenth. Uh if anyone is interested in participating and helping out the kids, guiding the kids. Uh on how to do an interview, reach out to, who should I reach out to?
Reach directly out to me, I'll get you connected to the right person.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, it truly is, every year that I have the opportunity to do it, I'm just so inspired by our kids. And I often recruit future teachers, like, hey, have you ever thought about being a teacher? So I mean, it's selfishly, it's a great recruiting tool too, but it, you know, it's really inspiring to be around our youth and it gives you great hope for our future. Our future looks bright, so thank you for amplifying that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Broussard, Mr. Broussard.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the presentation, um school impact fees. Uh we 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 talked about it a couple, like a month or so ago, um we had a development fee uh uh presentation and so. I just wanted to bring that, bring that up and see. Um is it something that we can revisit, cause it sounds like it's something that has not been talked about or hasn't really been changed in some time. And so and how can we get the kind of channels of communication open so where we update that quite more more frequently than than, you know. And I I guess I'm asking about it now.
Yeah, certainly, so there is a requirement under the, either the ordinance or the law that that's revisited on an interval, I believe it's every two years. As part of uh our capital facilities plan and we interface with the council uh around that. In order for us to even request impact fees, we have to qualify by formula under the law. So right now, actually, our external. Uh general or our external counsel, our external attorney is doing those um those calculations. Um so if by calculation we don't qualify, we can't come ask you for it, so as soon as we know what that that. That calculation will yield, we'll work with city staff. Um but impact fees are 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 temporary in that. You have to qualify under the law, so the point in which our enrollment and growth. Shows that we no longer qualify, we wouldn't be asking the city for those, and so like I said, I'm really waiting for that calculation to happen. Um and it enrollment drives part of that, um that it's a pretty complex formula. Um like and we're working through that process right now, I'm not sure of the review date with the city, but I'm I.
Yeah, it's probably, you probably haven't done it, we we don't tend to do things at the right intervals, it seems like, on time, but um. No, so you're saying that right now this school district's not collecting impact fees?
We currently collect them under the current capital facilities plan. But like I said, it's required to review that on an interval, which I believe is every two years. Um and there are some dynamics around our 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 growth, enrollment growth, like our. Enrollment declined over the pandemic, it's making kind of a slow recovery, so if again, that drives part of the formula. Um for whether or not we even qualify for them, so I. And I have no, no kind of preconceived notion about how that calculation is, what that will yield. Um but we're working on that right now.
I'm sure, yeah, no, we'll definitely um ask Adam where that's kinda at and he can, we'll work it that way. What is the city not doing, I guess, and you, from your perspective, I, you know, you guys are developing quite a bit, I mean, how's that process like? And among other things, um you know, I I would like to see uh more partnership with the school district in in the regards to. Getting more of the high school students in here to see what we do, cause I would like to think that there's some high school. Um people attend Pasco, you know, Pasco's with school district that are gonna be perhaps future leaders, so I would like to see something like that. Where they can come in and talk, but you know, I guess it's just kind of an open forum for you to let us know. Is the city holding up their end of the bargain, is there things we can do better?
Sure, well, I think in any relationship, there's always things both parties can do better and I think part of my being here is this, like, we don't. As a, as a school district, I haven't done a great job in reaching out to Adam. And um providing information about some of the innovations that we're doing, so. This is part of that effort, I think there's potentially opportunity for the council and our school board um to build some some partnerships. Um in terms of. The our high school students coming and interfacing with the council, I think that's a phenomenal idea and and would fit perfectly into that law. And justice uh pathway, that's part of what that pathway is, is for students who are interested in the law, but also. Interested in government and especially local government, so I think there's some really awesome opportunities there that we could leverage. Um so really, my hope was to provide this um this information to the city tonight. And open up that dialogue about how we we can continue to partner and broaden that partnership moving forward, so. Um there's really no idea that's off the table in what we, what we would want that to look like, we can really innovate. Um and dream about that together.
Awesome, thank you much, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broussard, Mr. Harbster.
Thank you, uh do you know, Ms. Whitney, the average student to teacher ratio for the school district as a whole and how it compares nationally?
I know locally that our. Our student to teacher ratio ratio is the the lowest of the three um local school districts, I don't know how that compares nationally. And I wanna say it was, oh, I I better not guess, I can get that for you, I think the last data I saw was like. I don't know, fifteen or eighteen to one, but I don't, I don't, I will get you accurate information. But I do know that the, it is the lowest of the three locally.
Um one thing you mentioned in response to Councilmember Grimm was, it it's challenging for the district to work with students that need extra help. Who didn't start out with the school district. Um can you explain a little more, cause I I may have missed hers, we've got, as you know, so many people moving here. And so if that was the case, that would seem to me to be pretty problematic, but can you just elaborate a little bit on that further? For those students who maybe aren't testing where they should be or who just need extra help?
Yeah, so when a student, for example, comes to us in second grade, I, we don't have any control over. The quality of the education, kindergarten first and second. So when we get them, they are where they are, so if that student happens to be behind when we get them from wherever they came from. We have second grade and then they're taking a state test in third grade. So that's, we only have a year to influence their growth while while we have them. Um students that come to us, for example, in tenth or eleventh grade and have, they don't have formal education and are, and have not yet had the opportunity to learn English. Um that might not sound like it's a lot of kids, but there's, you know, it's a significant number of students that come to us. Those are the, that's, those are the circumstances that I'm talking about, so. And especially when they come to us in ninth grade and then they test on a state test in tenth grade. So we only have like a year's time to influence their education while they're with us. Um we, we have very innovative programs to to support kids who need additional help. It's just, do we have enough time to influence their their growth before they're tested? In one of those benchmark years on a, on a state test.
Gotcha, okay. Um and then again, Councilmember kinda brought it up, but uh Grimm brought it up, but the uh, as far as testing levels. The, I mean, if you just do a Google search for Pasco School District, testing levels were fairly low. So can you explain again kinda what the district's doing to improve those scores?
Yeah, so we, we built a data dashboard that disaggregates that data into student groups that now for us is actionable. So where we see the need is around early learning, students again that come in as. Like performing like a second two year old, when they're supposed to perform like a five year old. They come to us significantly behind and it's a, it's a pretty large percentage for us. So we know now that early learning needs to be a a key influencer for us. And or how do we accelerate the that learning while they're with us in kindergarten? Um for every dollar you invest in early learning, it's like an eleven dollar investment once they get to us. We also know, again, that students that are coming to us that have significant amount of mobility that are moving around. Again, those are students who are not performing as well, so we need to be thoughtful and intentional about building in opportunities for them to accelerate their learning. Maybe it's after school tutoring, maybe it's summer school offerings, maybe it's acceleration during the school day or all of the above, depending on who the students are. Um we know that our students who are in our current dual language programs actually outperform their English speaking peers. So that is why we've invested in um expanding that program and so that our students who are learning language. Um have a a better opportunity to perform well on the state test.
Okay, thanks for that. Um another question, how do salaries for Pasco School District teachers compare to other teachers in the area? I bring that up because there's a recent Tracy Heard article that um. Stayed that the average teacher salary tries to is around ninety thousand, and my thought was, great, you know, should be higher. Besides the fact that ninety K is kinda the new sixty K. Um so compared to just kind of our local area, where do, where do Pasco School District teachers generally fall?
So with all of our bargaining groups, regardless if it's teachers or par professionals, we on an, on an interval annually or. Um on contract cycles do a market, a market analysis. Um and to be, to be hiring the best and brightest, you have to stay market competitive. And so our salaries fall right in line where where um Kenwick and Richland are and it kinda depends on what, who's bargaining and when. Um but our goal is always to be very competitive um. Locally, and you have to be because you're recruiting for the same, the same students or the same teachers, and so you have to be offering. A competitive salary, you have to be offering competitive professional developments, competitive facilities. Um you know, there, as we look at Chihuahua High School being the largest school in Washington State. And teachers being in a situation where they're having to share a classroom or be on a cart or in a classroom. A different classroom every class period and they can go to a neighboring district and have their own classroom, like those things matter too. So it's not only about the salary, but it's about the the experience that 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 teachers can have here. I will say that we, for an elementary teacher over the summer, it was not uncommon for us to have eighty five applicants. So definitely people are wanting to come here, um we've recruited and, excuse me, I don't recruit other people's people. Um people have, we've gotten administrators from other districts that are wanting to come and work in Pasco and. You know, I'm really proud of that, you know, I've been in this district thirty years and there was a time. All my friends who got teaching jobs were in Kenwick and Richland and when I took a teaching job in Pasco, people were like, you wanna teach in Pasco? And now I have people coming and wanting to teach in Pasco, and that was one of my, you know, kind of. White hot wise on the inside is like, what do I wanna be able to say in ten years from now as superintendent and that's that. Other people's people wanna come be in Pasco and that's happening, so it's a real source of pride for me.
Um. The, I like the goal of um, one of the goals that was listed of one hundred percent of ninth graders on track for graduation. How are the high schools performing with that goal? And then secondly, uh what were the graduation rates for the most recent graduation in June across the board for the four high schools?
Yeah, so when I came on as superintendent almost ten years ago, which is crazy to me, it's gone by so fast. Um about thirty six percent of our students were on track for graduation or at in ninth grade. And if that didn't make my, yeah, I did the same thing, Councilman Milney. Um right before the pandemic, we were at seventy five, seventy six percent. That, that data point took a huge hit during the pandemic and so we're starting to kind of build our way out of that. And it's been complexed with all of the things that are going on for kids right now. Um but we made huge impacts and gains pre pandemic around that and we're starting to see that data point kind of bounce back. Um and that has to do with the way that our kids are scheduled in classes and. Um our administrators and teachers and counselors working to know each individual student and where they are and knowing them by name, strength and need and intervening. Just in time and providing interventions during the school day so kids can make up um credits and. Being innovative with our virtual opportunities, cause you may have a kid. Who is enrolled in a full day set of classes at the high school but taking a virtual class. To do a credit retrieval, for example, so it isn't always a student who is enrolled a hundred percent virtually. So all of those things help with that, I think the biggest piece is that students need to know someone knows who they are. And expects them to do well and is there for them when when they're not and and is able to hold them accountable and walk them through the system. Um so that's the first part, first answer to the first part of your question, and then graduation rates, uh we got some preliminary information a week or so ago. Chihuahua High School's graduation rate's up by about four percent. Um Pasco High's.
Up four percent to what?
Uh I can find out for you. Hmm it's in the mid. Maybe mid eighties, I I'll find out the, um cause again, it's preliminary, so when I got it, I reviewed it, but I don't. Share it like as official until it's finalized, uh Pasco High's graduation rate was about. The same as last year, again, around that. Mid or early eighties, um the impressive thing about our graduation rates. We always wanna increase the students who are graduating in four years, absolutely, there are students who don't. And you know, you can say that's a period at the end of somebody's school experience and they go off and they don't have a high school diploma. Reretain our students and graduate the last, the five year graduation rate for Pasco High School is like ninety two percent or something like that. And I think that data point, while not, we want them to graduate in four years. But we want them to have a high school diploma, so to have then students hang on with us for an extra year. Um through dedicated staff and families who want their kids to go across that graduation. Stage regardless if it's a four years or five years, um I think is also a a testament to the hard work of of this, of the district. Um because it would be easy to lose sight of those kids and have them drop out. And we know that students who drop out of school, their livelihoods are impacted by like eight hundred dollars a month, they'll make eight hundred dollars a month less. For the their, the rest of their lifetime, um which means then they're not contributing to our community in the level that they could if they were a high school graduate.
How is high school number three coming along? Is it on track to open in August and are there any concerns with staffing it fully and then just, you can speak to. You know, you obviously don't wanna hire a whole bunch of brand new teachers, how do you make sure that you got experienced teachers maybe transferring from Pasco and Chihuahua?
No, it's a great question, so the construction project is on on target, um it is um under budget at this point. Um and we're really pleased with the collaboration with our contractors, I actually had. The uh executive director from our National Principals Association in the district today. And he is based out of Virginia, but he's actually from Hawaii. And he was really struck by the level of partnership and the feeling of ownership. From the contractors of that school and he was just really impressed with what what he termed, you know, he just said this, like the level of. Kind of collaboration and commitment, like the whole community is owning this school. And he said is different than anything he sees when he travels to places across the nation, so. Not only are we doing a work in a way that's fiscally responsible, it's on time, it's on track, I think it really also amplifies the core values. Of people who live in this community. Um in terms of staffing, we, staffing a brand new school, especially the scale of our comprehensive high schools is. Certainly a complex task and we do that in partnership with our labor partners. Um through that process, we'll have to negotiate special agreements around how the staffing process works. But we definitely have our eye on trying to have that um mix of both. Existing and brand new teachers, cause you're right, you don't wanna hold staff or a whole building full of brand new teachers never taught before. Um so we'll be working through that process with our labor partners here this fall. With the goal of working through the staff process when we get back from Christmas, so our goal is to have. The high schools, because you're really re-staffing all of the high schools, um completed by the end of January.
Okay, and then last question, can you just speak to, uh you know, there's twelve point something percent of students that receive special ed services and. I bring it up is when my son, who's in sixth grade now, when he was in kindergarten. He needed special ed services and I remember at the time thinking like, well, he doesn't, you know, have any issues or mental deficiencies or Down syndrome or something. Cause that was kind of the stigma when I was in high school fifteen years ago. And um it was just for uh speech and pronunciation and whatnot, and he went from there to just finishing up four years of high cap. And so just for the public's knowledge, can you kind of explain the services that the special ed program provides?
So your story illustrates a really important point, special education services are on a continuum from. What we call the least restrictive environment to the most restrictive. What we call the least restrictive environment to the most restrictive environment. And classes that are the most restrictive environment are those for students that are highly impacted. Um, those are our life skills and self-contained classes. Um. Uh, Mayor Serrano came over to our transition center um and got to experience some of our students who. Really, there's that continuum in that class. There are students where um are there for maybe just. Minimal support, but then there are students there that need um really, really significant support. So our our life skills and self-contained classes are going to be those kids who have um who need the most support in. And their focus then in those classes are learning life skills and kind of how to navigate the world. And then you have kind of in the middle, this continuum of what we call resource room services and they can be anything from. A student who's has, for example, a disability around mathematics. And so they don't go into a regular class for like a general education classroom for ma- mathematics. They would go into a resource room for that class. But then are getting access to their their age, age appropriate and the general education peers in other classes. Um, and then you have students who they're in general education for most of the day. But maybe get one short like forty-minute class that gets some resource room support to just get some extra, maybe it's helping, you know. Decoding vocabulary or some reading comprehension, for example. Um, and then you have kids who are in general education all day. And they get just support from a special education teacher coming in and checking on them or a paraprofessional checking on them. And we also have classes that are called co-taught classes where there's one general education teacher and a special education teacher. That has a a set of or a class full of twenty-eight kids. Some of those kids are special education. And the others are general education and the special education and general education teacher are actually working together. To team teach or co-teach all of the students. Um, so that really is the continuum that we have in Pasco and depending on where kids fit based on data and need. They plug into those classes and I think your example is really a good one in that it's fluid and flexible and should be. Um, it's fluid and flexible based on data and partnership with parents and you know, our goal is for kids to move across that continuum. Um, and get the services they need for as long as they need them, but once they don't, they don't. So. Um, we also house the regional deaf education program for the entire region. Um, and it's a it's a fantastic program which has provided an amazing environment where, for example, there's four hundred and fifty students at Chihuahua High School. Who's taking ASL as a second language, not part of the deaf education program, but because we have. A a deaf culture in our community, there are students who are really interested in learning ASL as a second language. So it. Provides us an amazing opportunity to grow um culturally sensitive. Individuals when we have this range of offerings. So not only is it our program good for our students who are in special education. But it's also pretty amazing for our kids who are in general education because they're learning a lot about people with different needs and how we all. Um, can live and kind of, you know, co-be in the same place and learn to respect each other and help each other learn. Um, so it's a pretty amazing set of offerings.
That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, years ago, I was on the committee to do the the next high school, uh, the one you were talking about. Uh, of course, then COVID hat.
Oh, that's right, yep.
You know, it was kind of went to along the wayside. Um, we talked a lot about the different trades. I know in my industry, you know, selling tools to contractors, they always talk about they can't get enough help. I know Pasco High has a very good program, very proud of that one. Chihuahua, it doesn't. I know, you know, they do bus people over to Pasco High. They say a lot of times they don't get the the full, you know, hour slot because of the time difference going there and back. So on the new high school, I know we have engineering and manufacturing, but can you lay a little bit what, yeah, you know. This school is doing to address the needs of, you know, the trades. I mean, again, not everybody's going to go to college. Um, is again, since I'm not on the committee and can you just. Put a little tidbit on that as far as what this next high school is, what their plan is to address trades. Because obviously that distance is maybe harder to get to Pasco High, so.
Sure, so um part of our construction projects in the twenty-three bond. Was to modernize the career and technical edu- education spaces at the existing high schools. So under that bond, Pasco High Schools like automotive shop, wood shop, welding shop. Those things will all be modernized so that we can continue to evolve those programs up against industry standards. So. You know, it's gone are the days of, you know, it our automotive lab needs more technology infrastructure because now. Cars are diagnosed by computers, so um. So those programs will get modernized. Simultaneous to that, as we think about opening the new high school, part of what is will happen is because of the signature program focus. The the boundaries between our high schools become what I call more permeable. So if I'm like a student who's boundaried for Sage View or Chihuahua and I want to be part of automotives or welding. Or the construction cra- ta- trades class, for example. Instead of having to do the busing, I can opt into that school and go to school where my signature program lives. And that would be the same for Sage View and Chihuahua. So if I'm a Pasco High student, but I want to be in the ag program. At Sage View, then I can opt into that school as my home school and not just be bussed over there for a period. Um, we don't do as much of that now because our schools are too full. So with the, you know, with the new school opening, this will allow some flexibility and by policy will make that change. So that it makes it easier and more predictable for families. Now they opt in one year, but the next year we might not have room for them and, you know, families don't like the inconsistency year to year, which I completely respect. Um, so. The. So that that's the that's the answer to that. The other pe- well, part of the answer, the other piece to that. Is being really thoughtful and intentional as we add programming at O- at Orion. That it is focused, like I said, on that continuum where it isn't only focused on students who are going to tier or four-year university. That it's also focused on the end of the continuum where students are looking for an experience with us. That gives them an industry credential that would allow them to go right into the world of work. And at that school, it's around engineering, manufacturing and and health services. Um, so the goal for us was to provide a continuum of opportunities and not replicate opportunities at any of the high schools. Or replicate opportunities that are already available at Tri-Tech, but to be thoughtful and intentional about offering more.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And one quick last question, I was at a meeting uh last year at Pasco High and they said they were redoing their phone. Uh.
Yeah.
Can you, I mean, I know phones are huge distraction. Uh, can you kind of say a couple of words on that? What what is Pasco High doing different?
Absolutely. So to tell the Pasco High story, I want to tell the middle school story first. So last year, the middle school principals were bold in their elimination of cell phones during the school day. And did a phenomenal job partnering with students and families um to implement that policy. And sometimes as a superintendent, you kind of gauge how things are going by what you're not hearing. And I didn't get one parent complaint when they implemented that program or that policy at the middle school level, which makes me believe they did it in a way. That parents were, they knew about it and could support it. Um. Veronica Machado is the principal at Pasco High told me that she saw a significant difference in the ninth graders coming in. In terms of their social emotional development and their engagement with each other because they didn't have cell phones as ninth graders. And in a difference in a good way. The high schools had already planned to do an elimination of cell phones during the school day, so they've, all of the high schools have implemented that. Um, there's very clear guidelines around it and they're working now through kind of reculturing. Um, the building by reminding kids and kind of, you know, they're they've kind of had a soft walk into it. Um, but the, when you go to Pasco High, like you're Chihuahua, you don't see kids on their phones and teachers aren't either. So it applies to staff as well and, you know, from all reports, the the building principals feel like it was the right work. To do and um about the time that Pasco High was in or all of our high schools were implementing that, there was a. Kind of a call to action by the state superintendent encouraging districts across Washington State to really think about cellphone usage in schools. So I was proud of our leaders for being at the forefront and that was them as building principals, knowing their kids and knowing their community and know the knowing the right time. To implement something like that. That was not a top-down board or district or superintendent directive. Um, and I think actually speaks to the success of it when we allow our leaders that are closest to kids to make decisions for kids. Um, that's when they're implemented well and and the community responds well. So for all reports from from the adults, it's going well. Um, there were, I did get involved in a couple of issues where there were some really specific needs around cellphone usage. For example, if you had a student with anxiety and they use their cellphone for calming music, like so. Where there's been individual needs like that, we work through that with a five oh four process or through a special accommodation plan, but. I'm aware of one of those. It's uh, but like I said, for all reports from the grownups, it's going well.
Okay, well, thank you and I appreciate you answering all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you for all that information, Ms. Whitney. Appreciate it.
I was told fifteen minutes, but.
We we work in multiples here.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate you and your staff for the preparation, for the information. It's always good to uh see that we're trying to find a way to continually work together and promote each other. Uh, as we continue to grow Pasco, obviously that's a, you're an absolutely needed service for our community, so thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor and pleasure. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Now you can sleep.
That's right. We'll give it a try tonight. We'll see how it goes.
Have a great night. Uh, with that, we'll move on to our public uh public comment. Public comment portion of this agenda item. So with that, again, the rule, ground rules are such that we have. An aggregate of up to eight minutes of comments uh two per side at two minutes each. So do we have any public comment on this portion of our presentation? Going once, going twice, going a third time. I guess we have no public comment on item A. Moving on to item B, we have the citywide minimi- citywide minimization and speed management implement update. And it looks like Director Sarah and we've got a couple of other additional presenters.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we are presenting to you the, an update on our work related to city. Citywide injury minimization and speed management. Uh, this is a traffic study focusing on speed, citywide. Um, which was funded through a federal grant. And at this time, we're presenting to you an update on our results of our data gathering and analysis. Uh, there is no action associated with this item other than uh share with you the findings. And then, of course, the implementation steps are forthcoming and we will talk about those. For this presentation, uh, you see in um the podium. Uh, Sean Messner, he's our contracted traffic engineer working with CivTech. And I'll pass this on to him. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for um allowing me to give a brief update on the project tonight. Uh, Sean Messner with CivTech and I'm here to talk about the mouthful of the title of the project. Which is citywide injury minimization and speed management implementation project. Um, just to give a little bit of a s- a background of the study itself. Um, as Ms. Sarah mentioned, the project itself was funded through a highway safety improvement program funding. Uh, which was generated by the local road safety plan for the city. So in twenty twenty, the city had their first local road safety plan that looked at crash data throughout the city. That was updated in twenty-two and as part of that study, it identified that crashes around the city on the city roadways. Um, speeding was a major contributor to those crashes. So the city applied for funding and received it. And part of the project itself is, uh, at least the goal of the project is to develop a speed limits policy. Um, identify where speeding is occurring through data collection and make it a data-driven process. And identify mitigation to reduce the speeding thereby reducing the crashes and making the roadways throughout the city safer. Um, a little bit about the study process, uh, we're following the national guidance for doing speed limit studies. Uh, there's, it's constantly updated as new data and new studies come around. It's based on real-world studies. Um, across the United States, it's a national type item. And as technology continues to develop, uh, these these guidelines are constantly updated. So that um new items can be brought forward when we're doing studies. Uh, the study process itself is data-driven. We do a lot of data collection. Uh, we collected data across a hundred and three locations throughout the city. Uh, we look at speed and volume and classifications, so the size of the vehicles that are traveling on the roadways, how fast they're going and the number of them. Uh, we look at the crash data along the arterials and at the intersections. And we look at each one of the corridors from a multi-modal or bike and pedestrian facility usage as well as a roadside data usage. Which would typically be the number of driveways, number of intersections along a segment. Um, and presence of sidewalk and items like that. Um, and then at the end of the study is really where we get to that mitigation, where we develop recommendations and conclusions. And then we move that forward into uh implementation ideally. As part of the data that we collected along the arterials and the collectors, uh, is the eighty-fifth percentile speed data. That's typically what's used to set speed limits on arterials and collectors. Again, it's a national practice and guidance that's used not only here, it but in the tri-cities area with Kennewick and Richland. Across the state in Washington and throughout the United States. And part of that is to. Make sure that when people are traveling from state to state and city to city, they know what to expect when they're traveling across those city lines. When we collected the data, we noted that there are several corridors throughout the city where we have speeds in excess of ten miles an hour. Over the posted speed. Those locations are highlighted here on the map and those are the biggest safety concerns for us. Um, when we have data that shows that crashes were generated by speeding. And we have these corridors that have speeds in excess of ten miles an hour, those are the highest concern for us uh to take a look at. And to look for mitigation to reduce those speeds and to make those segments of roadway safer. Um, as part of this project, we're also looking to develop and have a draft of it, a speed limit policy. The purpose of that policy is really to identify the methodology and establishment for speed limits. How are they set on our roadways? What kind of data has to be collected and reviewed? What kind of a study needs to be performed to make sure that the results are data-driven? Um, we also looked at development of a neighborhood traffic calming program. Um, and the policy itself includes different procedures and processes for the study itself. Um, as well as what happens when new roadways come in through city annexation. Um, if it's a county roadway at the higher speed, but we're changing the land use along there. What process do we go about to reduce that speed or change it to something that's more reflective of the use that it's intended for? And with the traffic calming, with neighborhood traffic calming, we're looking at what kind of examples nationally can be implemented. And make sure that those are a toolkit for future development as it comes along and for future studies to. Um, reduce speeds in neighborhoods and make the neighborhood safer. In terms of the status of the study, it's in a draft form right now. We've compiled all of that data. Um, I can't tell you the stacks of data that we've collected and have gone through. And it's under city staff review right now as well as police department. Um, we are just one aspect of the entire process. So engineering, education and enforcement. Are the three E's that come together with these types of studies and with any kind of implementation that's traffic engineering related. We don't want to recommend something that can't be enforced by the police department. And we want them to make sure that, we want the police department to review it and to make sure it's something that we're not missing. Um, they're on the streets every day, they're enforcing things, they see what's out there in the field and so their review of this is really important for us. The recommendations include um adding some additional speed limit signs out there. There's a lot of roadways that don't have speed limit signs currently. And it's not fair to the public to not know what the speed of the roadway is. Um, installation of radar feedback signs, so oftentimes I'll be driving along a roadway and. Think I'm doing thirty, but I'm really doing forty, so it's a reminder to come back to um. The public as they're driving to remind them to drive at the speed limit. Um, traffic calming devices, uh, we've looked at uh some recommendations include the installation of those devices throughout. Local roadways or in neighborhoods. And then adjusting the the striping or the signal timing along certain corridors, which will help with the speed. Um, and help with keeping the roadways safer. Our next steps are to take in any comments from city staff and from the police department and finalize the study. We're hoping to have that completed in the next couple of months and then begin to design and implement the recommendations from the study. I tried to keep it within my ten minutes.
Well, we appreciate that. Let's see if council can do the same. With that, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I know we had a course of two and a half hour talk this afternoon, so again, thank you for answering a lot of the questions. Um. What, I know the issue that I kind of brought out was to have mobile uh. Speed cameras, uh, especially even though your report shows that eighty-five percent of people from. Uh, Road One, Rod Court, Road One Hundred West are doing the speed limit. I, you know, myself and other people in the audience get a test that obviously they're going, there is a smaller group of people that are going a lot faster. I, you know, myself and other people in the audience get a test that obviously they're going, there is a smaller group of people that are going a lot faster. So my question really is to the council that we really consider, we have two uh cameras. That we hand out tickets in Pasco. I'm asking that we seriously consider. Putting in a mobile system if the city staff could afford it and all that sort of stuff, and they're said they'll look into it. But we put it where some of these corridors, these temporary speed cameras could be placed. And so these young guys that are speeding on their, whether it's their bikes or. Small Japanese cars that they get hit with a hundred or two hundred dollar tickets, and we hope that. People know that when they come into Pasco, they can't terrorize our neighborhoods. Uh to me, it's um seems to be a better way to solve some of the issues versus having. Um you know, candlesticks and some of the other stuffs and we went over a lot of why speed bumps. You know, you could, if you want, you could contact me later, I could go over it, but uh there's a lot of issues with that as well. But uh I'd like really to get on board if it is all possible with the council. We'd hate to say staff, we could do it, and then the council votes it down, so uh. Anyway, that is my ask. And then I know we also talked about Road Ninety-Six. Uh Bellflower people hitting over there uh on Ninety-Six, the speed bumps. Uh I don't know if you wanna bring up what some of the things that you're gonna try to implement to get people not to go around the speed bumps and then. Hit uh Bellflower as fast as they can, so I don't know if you want like to bring that up, might be better.
Um yeah, I can. Uh thank you for the question. The uh the speed cushions that are installed on Road Ninety-Six right now. Work pretty well when people don't go around them. And so there's a shoulder that's there. The shoulder on the west side is mostly gravel, um the shoulder on the east side, depending on the location of the two. Or three cushions um is pavement, but what we're looking to install is uh something like candlesticks to guard. Or kind of funnel the traffic uh into keeping them on the pavement, so they don't go around those speed cushions. Um the speed cushions are only effective if you are forced to drive over them. And so we are looking at doing that, uh which will help reduce the the weaving around the speed cushions or the devices and help. Keep the speeds lower.
Okay, and then my my last question was, so how often do we do this? I know since, I think you said before twenty-twenty-one. The study hadn't, there was no study, it was just things where people would call it to, you know, the city manager and they would try to sort it out. So we do this study, wouldn't it be like the next study that would happen?
Um that's that's also part of what uh is recommended within the study itself is the frequency. And so uh it's a cost benefit type item. And what we uh and this is a long-winded answer, I'll promise I get to the the number pretty soon. Uh but we want to do both, re-measure everything and take new data, collect it so that we can. One, see how traffic patterns have changed and what the speeding, what speeding looks like at that point in time, but two. To look back at what we've implemented and gauge how well it worked. So it's a twofold type thing. Um when we implement new devices, ideally we'll collect new data shortly after it's installed and people are used to driving it. Um so that we can get an immediate um reaction and data points, but. Typically, those the speed limit studies ideally would be updated every two to three years.
Okay, um I would ask, uh you know, once we get the. The things people have to go over the speed bombs on Ninety-Six, I would ask that in the next one that Bellflower be added on to the study, I know. We have Argent as a heavy use, Row Ninety-Six that I use, but obviously if they're using Ninety-Six, they're going somewhere to get to Row One Hundred. So I know you said that Pasco High, or not Pasco High, the Pasco Police Department uh did a study, but it would be better if. We'd have you guys, you know, actually do a a real study where you have the equipment out there and it's. It's done correctly so that you don't have constituents calling saying that, hey, we we want a study, so I'm asking as a councilman. That we include that and try to get that done and and hopefully this will correct once we add in those barriers. Um hopefully it'll get people to not use Ninety-Six, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the policies and procedures you were talking about. Um. And have you done any work with the city of Spokane?
Um yes.
Yeah, cuz I saw that they had updated their policies and stuff, so back in two thousand thirteen, the state legislature. Add more language to our speeding laws and how cities can i- in effect change them. And so we've essentially been not up to date, you know, shocker with our some of our stuff. Um I guess what I'm trying to say is the policy that you're gonna be presenting, is that gonna be bogged down by like a clay layer bureaucracy? Where we're not gonna be able to change speed limits, or is it gonna be a little easier for us to say, we want this street to be lowered to twenty-five?
Um the the goal of the policy is to make sure that. Um everything has a data point that's tied to it and that the policy can be implemented across the city. Um the goal would not be to make things harder uh to do or to change. Um we had talked about doing a policy versus some other kind of document, whether it's a code revision or a standard. And the goal would be to make it as a policy that that outlines what needs to happen. Right now, we don't have the what needs to happen part. And to make sure that that's really clear and that we can follow that and get staff trained. Uh whether it's city staff or a consultant to be able to do that and be able to implement things quickly.
I guess cuz I I guess I'm I'm like, I don't know what to think about. I'm glad we did this study and stuff, but it seems like we don't follow the data, though. So back in twenty twenty-three, they changed Burns Road, you were, I think, looked like CivTech had a help in that. And it found that they really weren't really speeding, they were within ninety-five, eighty-fifth percentile, but we changed it anyways. So that's what I mean, like, I want it to be easier than that. So at that point, the city and staff went against the data. Is it, does that?
No, we didn't go against the data. So the data was collected before development came on board, and so it was changed on two parts. One, because of driveways, uh so there were driveways that are out there today. That didn't have the site distance based off the speeds that were posted. So the traveling speeds, when somebody was coming over the hill, for example, if you were to make a left turn out, the speeds were too fast for that maneuver. And so there was data that was collected for that. You're right, in the sense that eighty-fifth percentile speeds matched the posted speed at that time. But it wasn't considering into the account of the future classification and development.
Okay, I exactly, just where I live, I mean, you, any day, it's like the French Connection, you should come out there and check it out. It's it's just like a raceway all the time, and so it's thirty-five, I would like to see it be twenty-five, and it's odd. We have one street, Row Forty-four, that goes up twenty-five, but then you take a left on Madison, it's thirty-five. There's been tons of wrecks. And so I just wanna get through that stuff and let's just make it safer. I I don't see the issue with lowering the speed limit. I I mean, I was just thinking, make it safer. We just, you just, the biggest note on that presentation was that a lot of the uh crashes here in Pasco had to revolve around speeding. So I mean, you're the, I get, I get, you know, you're the expert. Is reducing the speed limit an issue, a liability for the city in your in your realm?
It is if there's not data collected to support it, yes. So if you reduce a speed without enforcement or education. Then people are going to travel faster than that speed regardless, right? And so if you have that, then you have a false sense of security by pedestrians, by bicyclists, by other vehicles that are entering into the roadway. And so there is a liability for that, yes.
So I guess with that change in two thousand thirteen. I mean, like, city of Spokane, you say help of the city of Spokane, I mean, do they really have to go off data cuz it says that you can change that stuff without. A po- you know, a a study being done according to what I was reading.
Um I'm not completely familiar with the city of Spokane's policy. I have done work with them and I've done traffic calming. Work with them as well. Uh we've looked at speed studies with Inga Note, who's the city traffic engineer. Um I'm not familiar with the policy from what the council's able to do or not do.
Okay.
Or what the city administrator might be able to do. Um with regards to the WAC and the RCWs for the state, it's very clear that any changes to speeds have to be. Reviewed by a traffic engineer or there has to be a data-driven process for that. Um city policies can change that, so.
I think the change in two thousand thirteen allowed it not to be that way, as long as the city had policies. Policies and procedures implemented, somewhat or kind of what we're doing, which made it a little easier, cuz like, for instance, for example, in the city of Spokane. They wanted to make it uh safer around their parks, and so they were bogged down by this law. Well, they changed it, and so cuz they wanted to make it down to twenty-five. So whatever, it's probably thirty-five or something like that. So it allows it, it's more flexible, allows the city more authority to change it. So maybe um perhaps I I get your email, maybe we can go back and forth and we can discuss it, but I think, you know, I just don't wanna. Help implement it and then nothing really changes, cuz the community, we hear about it all the time. We've had people come in time after time. And another we can do, throw our hands up. And I I feel like there's there's an answer out there, so I just think we need to put our heads together. And maybe perhaps you can look into that change in two thousand thirteen, talk with your colleagues in Spokane, and maybe we can kind of get that conversation started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brawls.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I'd like to remind uh uh Mr. Peralis that there was today. A call uh traffic calming meeting, which you were invited to last week and you canceled. A lot of times it's better to attend these one-on-one meetings um to get all these questions answered. Um I do also wanna highlight that this is. The city of Pasco has been following recommendations and has been following um policies. Uh for traffic in our city for for several years, correct me if I'm mistaken. All these plans are reviewed in collaboration with Pasco PD and Fire Department where it pertains. Um so. I I'm I'm just gonna say this, I I by throwing staff under the bus and saying that we've not. Been adhering and comparing to other cities that don't have anything to do with this, with our situation in particular. Um it's it's not fair. Um we, the city, the staff, council has been working very hard for many years. To make sure that we are doing best to our for our residents. Um implementing traffic studies, again, in collaboration with Pasco PD. Um this study here is 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 under review, currently under review. With Pasco PD for any suggestions, any recommendations, any anything. Um so. Yeah, I I I wish you would take opportunity, take the opportunities uh offered to you to meet. Uh to have these questions answered and many more questions that I'm sure you have. Um answer directly and um save a lot of time and confusion to to people that are here listening. Thank you.
Mr. Brawls.
I'll be quick, Mayor. Um guys, Mayor Barajas, you know, people have work constraints. Um so things happen, so to insinuate that I didn't come because I didn't come, I mean. I'm not sure where that's coming from. Um however, I do have an email from the MRSC that essentially said that. We're kind of out of date and we could be doing some of this stuff, so I went to a third party and that's the information they provided to me. So I understand we're doing it, but these are things that previous councils could have been looking into, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. Go out there and look at other policies out there. Just don't rely on the staff. Things get missed. That's it. And so if I'm to be one of those people on the council, who's gonna go out there and find things from other cities and. And they'll try and bring it here, well, then I guess I'll be that guy, but you know, like I said, I I apologize and I will try and meet. Another time for that meeting if that will assuage your concerns, but like I said, I've done a little bit of research on it, so if you got offended, I'm sorry.
And with that, we'll move on to the public comment section of this. Same ground rules, up to eight minutes. Two comments per side at two minutes each. Do you have any public comments? Going, ma'am, go ahead. No, I don't, whoever's up. If you can make sure you turn on the mic and I give your name and just city residents. No, no, uh turn on the mic, please, at the base. There you go, the red, yep.
Okay, my name's Dawn Griffiths. Um Dave knows me and Ms. Maria over there has heard from me as well. I live off Bellflower and um I appreciate the work that you've done on Ninety-Six. And what you've done is turn my road into NASCAR. Okay, people are making up their time. They're going over the speed bumps over there, they're having to slow down because of that, and they're making up their time. Getting from that road to Road One Hundred. I'd like to know why, why you fixed half the problem. You're saying there's a problem for people speeding from Argent to One Hundred, and then you fix half the problem. And Ms. Maria told me is because we have curves on our road. If you think that slows people down, give me a break. It's you're wrong. What happens actually is there's one car, house that has cars because they park outside cuz they have a lot of people. Okay, and it's on the curve, and people come hauling butt down that road. And they swing out to get around the cars, and now they're coming right at you. I almost got hit head-on the other day. Okay, you fixed half the problem. There was no study done on my road. I I'm there all the time. I work from home. There was no study done on my road when you guys did this on Road Ninety-Six. So I just would like to know if this is gonna be considered or should I just, you know, you don't care about my neighborhood? You just, you know, just forget it, don't bother us anymore cuz we don't care. That's what I need to know, and I'll stop bothering you. I'll stop texting you and I'll stop calling you.
Thank you. I I don't have an immediate response to that.
This councilman, I'm just gonna say I I keep working on this. Well, I've talked, I mean, again, try my best, I mean, again, there's only. Money, but I mean, again, this is very important to me. I know you, I know Lolly, so I mean, again, I'm doing my best.
As well, they've they've pretty much given up, though. They they just, they've given up.
Please just give us a chance and and I'll I'll keep working on it, okay?
Five years.
Thank you.
I'm pretty much gonna parrot what she said. So I live on the corner of Bellflower and Prairie. Before these things were installed, you would hear them come down One Hundred, I mean, down Bellflower. And on Ninety-Six, they'd open it up. You don't hear that anymore. Now it's reverse. They come up Ninety-Six, up 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 to Bellflower, then they open it up. All of these studies right here that you guys have talked about, all of them, to me equals zero. Why? Because their human component is not brought into this. People are human and they're going to do what they're going to do, and they're gonna get there however they're gonna get there and however they feel like it. And they're not gonna stop until it hurts them. Those speed bumps, they hurt them. The equation about not putting stuff like there, I I would help that guy. I I got, you know. Three-quarter concrete blocks, I'll put on both sides, I'll I'll funnel them on over those speed bumps. But you gotta train the human psychology, what's it gonna hurt me? Am I gonna take my car in to go get an alignment? Am I gonna have to replace a rim, or am I just gonna take it easy? Do they teach that in school? No, they don't. All those studies, they do not teach that. We live there. I wanna say about three or four years ago, they put that uh. One of those signs, they put it way up there off of Road One Hundred. No, 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 no. Put it down where I live. Put it down where I live, cuz when they're coming off of Road One Hundred, they're going around that on that deal and they're going. I got a I got a a a neighbor of mine that she said, quote, I don't let my girls play outside anymore, unquote. I hope we can do something. Because I don't want something to happen in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do we have any additional public comment on this issue? Going once. Twice. Third time. With that, we'll move on to item C, which is resolution. Project acceptance for wastewater treatment plant phase two B outfall replacement project. Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are presenting to you. Uh an acceptance for work performed in uh the river, actually. This was the phase two B. Or wastewater treatment improvements. This project was fully funded through low-interest loans through Department of Ecology for Clean Water Act. And the goal of this project was to build the last segment. Of um the outfall pipe, that is a forty-two inch pipe that was being replaced, so the existing one was much smaller. And this is the dream come true for any civil engineer. So that is uh building this pipe, building a diffuser underwater. And allowing for fish habitat on top of it. So with that, we're gonna go to the next slide, and as usual, uh you can see some. Uh work at the very beginning of the work, transporting that uh pipe. Um, in the river, it's, again, this is a dream come true for any civil engineer. This is once in a lifetime for a water treatment plant, uh, this was a wastewater treatment plant. Um, and you're seeing some construction on, uh, land on the very shore and then in the river. And we're gonna go to the next slide and see some more of this work, you're seeing the pipe being sunk. Uh, and fixed in place and then next slide please. This project was, uh, estimated at seven and a half million dollars, the bid award was for six point, almost eight million dollars. And, uh, total change orders, um, with underrunning of quantities and some contingencies, uh, taken away. There was almost half a million dollars in savings, final construction amount, uh, six point three million dollars. Next slide please. Um, and with that, we ask that we accept the word of our contractor so that, uh, they can be released. And follow all, uh, process for closeout of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister, Mister Grim.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. No, I just wanted to point out, this is Director Sarah's second project in a row, if I'm keeping track. That, um, came in under budget with change orders, so really appreciate that, especially in budget season, so thank you, well noted.
Thank you, Mister Grim. Uh, seeing no further lights, do we have any public comment on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time, no one wants to give us applause for Miss Sarah? Thanks, Mister Grim, for doing so. With that, we'll move on to item D, which is ordinance. The amending Pasco, uh, excuse me, amending sections of the Pasco Municipal Code Title seventeen, sign code and Pasco Municipal Code. Two five point nine five point zero five zero related to billboards, this is Mister Gonzalez.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Uh, this is an item related to amending the code, uh, to allow for billboards within the city of Pasco. Uh, this item has, uh, been subject to three workshops with City Council. Um, and as a reminder, in two thousand six, ordinance number thirty-seven ninety prohibited the replacement, substantial repair and construction of new billboards. And the intent of this, uh, request would be to allow for billboards, um, in specific zoning districts within the city of Pasco. Uh, on the next slide, a quick overview of the substantial changes to the amendment since it was last presented to council on, um, uh, in August. Uh, the city's definition of billboard has been updated to specify that they are off-site advertising signs. Uh, just as a quick note, um, cause it's hard to find within the ordinance language, billboards, um, are limited to two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, per sign face. Uh, also, uh, billboard sign structures, uh, must have a minimum separation distance. Of five hundred feet with no more than twenty-five billboard sign structures within the city. Um, uh, the, um, uh, there was some further clarification as you see on the next few slides as well. Related to, uh, the, uh, permitted areas, particularly related to the downtown overlay district. Um, coordinated with the applicant, uh, to identify the specific areas, uh, within the overlay in which the, uh, uh. Offsite, uh, billboards would be permitted outside of, uh, uh, the area. Uh, you can see a rectangle there between third and fifth and, um, uh, Columbia and Clark, I believe, uh, i- is the area. And then, uh, on the next slide, um, just, uh, an update to the billboard ordinance as it is presented in the draft ordinance for a city council review. And on the following slide, uh, just a slightly updated, uh, map of where, uh, billboards would be permitted under the, uh, proposed ordinance. So, um, the existing billboards are identified with the, um, with that call marker, uh, with the, uh, with the ones and twos in it. Uh, the hashed mark areas, uh, the blue teal color are the, uh, areas where billboards would be prohibited. Based on an overlay district, uh, or a zoning district. Um, the areas in yellow are the areas where billboards would be proposed under the proposed ordinance, uh, based on the underlying zoning district. Uh, so with that, um, staff's prepared, uh, an updated ordinance to reflect, uh, council and, uh, comments and direction from City Council. And coordination, uh, with the applicant. Um, as noted in the staff report, typically quote amendments, uh, most go through the planning commission process, this did not. So we just wanted to note that there have been no public hearings scheduled, uh, for this item, certainly staff can, um, or council can, um, uh. Direct staff to, uh, move forward with a public hearing if deemed necessary. Um, outside of the outreach from, uh, the applicant with various stakeholders in our downtown and a presentation to the Pasco Chamber of Commerce. Uh, staff has not initiated any, uh, public outreach, um, and also wanted to, uh, note, um. As indicated in the staff report, that while, uh, the proposed, uh, area for the billboards would be. In several of the industrial and commercial and office zoning districts. Uh, just wanted to clarify that some of those do about residential neighborhoods and residential uses, so just wanted to clarify that, uh, for City Council. Uh, so with that, there's an ordinance, uh, for your review, um, staff happy to take, uh, any direction from council. And answer any questions we can for you this evening about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blaisdell.
Um, I've seen some recent articles regarding light pollution in Washington State. And I'd like to know if the staff has done any additional research on how this might be a factor if we move forward.
Uh, following the, uh, August twenty-sixth meeting, the, uh, applicant for the proposal did provide some standards. For lighting on the billboards that seem to be in, uh, in alignment with natural or national, uh, best practices. Um, outside of that, there's been no additional research by staff.
And has the staff reviewed the aesthetics and visual impacts that it's going to be for our city?
Uh, staff has not done any particular study related to the billboard proposal.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell, Ms. Prowes.
Thank you, um, Ms. Blaisdell, we do have John here, so he can, might have some responses for those questions.
Um, I wanted my responses to come from the staff looking into it on our end, not from.
Yeah, I get it. Um, so here's, here's what I've, what I've read. I, I appreciate the changes, the updates to, uh, the RCW, um, per the map that we have here. Um, it's very specific, it shows specifically where the, these new billboards are allowed. In my understanding, there's, we have established a limit, correct? Of how many, okay, and, um, from what I read, also in regards to the lighting, the, the lighted, uh, billboards. That lighting, um, is adjusted, if I'm not mistaken, you, you mistaken. You, you mentioned it was the per national standards.
Uh, mispractices, yeah, yeah, yes, correct.
And it, it switches to, to the ambiance, I guess, so it's not too bright when it's dark.
Yeah, to adapt to the natural light, if it's overcast, you, you know, it, uh, it, the billboard will adapt to that, so it's, it's visual to, um. To lookers, yep.
Um, I think I, I, I'm glad to see this finally here. I would move to, um, um, just move forward, however, for peace of mind of everyone. If anybody requests that this go through the public hearing, uh, or the, sorry, the hearing examiner, I'm, I'm not opposed to that either. Uh, but I like the changes and I'm comfortable with these changes to, to the RCW. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Prowes, Ms. Prowes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I really appreciate staff, uh, co- coordinating this with Mister Lehman. I think, uh, I was gonna speak to not have any public hearing, I think we've had ample amount of opportunities, people have can, have came in here, have could have come in here and, and. And talked about it if, if they wanted to, so I just think at this point, it's just time to vote on this and put this behind us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Prowes. Seeing no further comment, um, uh, I'll just kinda dovetail those sentiments. I don't know that we necessarily need a, a public hearing at this point, um, I do think if there are additional questions of council. I think, you know, we certainly have the opportunity to ask those questions and if we think they're meaningful questions, it could drive additional analysis. Um, I, I'm open to continue the discussion if we see that need, so I'll just, I'll offer that. Um, but I'd like it to be driven, uh, kinda to Mister Prowes' point, I'd like to be driven from council. Cause we have had several, um, public opportu- opportunities for additional comment, so I'll just note that. That's my preference moving forward. Um, with that, do you have any public comment on this issue? I'm guessing you raised your, that was a raise of a hand, right? Okay, go for it, John.
Hi, my name is John Lehman with Meadow Outdoor, uh, P O Box seven nine seven, Rufus, Oregon, Niseven oh five oh. Um, I guess I needed to say that just to repeat for the public. Um, uh, real quickly, I wanna thank, uh, you, Mister Mayor, the City Council and staff. For working on this to move this forward. This is a, I mean, I, I really appreciate your time and your consideration and your work completely on this. Uh, the billboard ordinance is going to be a positive thing, I feel, and I've spoken to this fact, or to this feeling. From the beginning, it's gonna be a positive for the city of Pasco and the small local businesses. Um, allowing a small managed number of billboards is gonna create an efficient and effective option. For those small businesses to advertise. Um, small local businesses will benefit, the city will benefit. Through, uh, through that advertising and, um, alerting people on what's going on, what festivals, what. Um, types of activities are going on throughout the city. And one thing that I mentioned a while back was that, uh, our plan as Meadow Outdoor is to. When we build a digital billboard, we are giving one of those spots on that billboard to the city. To use how they want, um, to advertise, uh, festivals, like I mentioned. Alerts, safety concerns, things that the public needs to know. And digital billboards are an excellent way to do that and we're giving one spot on each one that we are able to do. To the city, to the council, the mayor, to use as they will. Um, one last thing on the light control, uh, it is automatic and I just wanted to stress that. Um, there's a sensor and a system that automatically dims it down when the light gets, gets dark, when it gets dark out. It dims it down, when it's brighter, it brings it back up. I guess I'm over. Thank you very much for your time and thank you again for all your consideration on this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate that whoever's driving the presentation brought that up. If you look at the final sentence, that the display will, uh, not exceed a certain candlelight, ambient, uh, light measure. But also have the ability to change in real time according to ambient light, so. Um, any additional public comment on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time, okay, with that, looks like we get to move on. Um, we're gonna move on to item E, this is our, another resolution for discussion. The twenty twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Annual Work Plan and allocations, uh, sticking with you, Superstar Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you and, uh, good evening again, Mayor and Members of Council, um, I'm gonna pass this on to, uh. Our Community Development Block Grant Administrator, Kristen Webb, and also introduce, um, the Deputy Director of Community Economic Development, uh, Craig Raymond. Uh, this is, uh, Director Raymond's first, uh, meeting in front of City Council. Uh, Craig joins us, um, after an extensive and, uh, and awesome career in both Montana and here in Washington and is back here in Washington. Uh, with great experience and, uh, and take it away.
Thank you very much, uh, Director Gonzalez, uh, Your Honor, City Councils, uh, good evening. It's nice to be here in person finally to meet you and we are here to talk to you about the CDPG in Home Program. And particularly the recommendations that staff and the planning commission have for you for the program this year. Uh, do you think it's worth noting that, uh, the city's annual allocation can vary slightly from year to year? And that can be dependent on different factors, uh, such as, uh, incoming or departing entitlement communities. In other words, how many pieces have to be cut out of the pie, uh, of course, federal budget and al- also, uh, harmony of Congress. Okay, um, so, uh, but I don't think you're gonna see anything really unusual, uh, this evening. Or for this year's program. Uh, with that being said, uh, Kristen Webb is the subject matter expert. Uh, for the CDPG in Home Program and I'm proud to introduce her, uh, to lead the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. To begin tonight's presentation. Um, I'm going to discuss the core objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program. This program awards yearly grants to states, cities and counties based on the formula, as Mister Raymond just explained. These grants aim to create strong urban communities by supporting decent housing, improving living conditions. And boosting economic opportunities with the focus on assisting low to moderate income families. The Community Block Grant Program administered by HUD is a crucial federal resource. That supports various community development needs. Um, these are some of the, uh, goals that are in our current consolidated plan. So we have rehabilitation for housing. In the last four years, we've helped eighteen applicants, uh, with a total of about. Nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, and public service activities in the last five years, we've helped twenty-eight applicants with a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Economic growth has been fostered with, uh, one point four million dollars distributed to twenty-five applicants in the last four years. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that starting in twenty nineteen. CDPG funds were allocated to help with the section one oh eight debt payment in the amount of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Each year, we advertise requests for applications, this begins the process for the next fiscal year. This starts on May first with the application deadline of May thirty-first. Staff reviews applications for completeness and to make sure that the requests for funding meet a national objective as well as are eligible for funding. Applications are then presented to the City Council, City Planning Commission in June. With applicants giving a brief presentation of their project. Planning Commission then holds a public hearing in July and staff presents the staff committee recommendation. If no recommendation is made, the hearing remains open until the next planning commission. And then at the next planning commission, the public hearing is closed with a recommendation to City Council. Staff presents the recommendation to City Council for approval and if approved, these projects will be added to the twenty twenty-five annual action plan. So this year, the criteria was aligned with council goals, the Tri-Cities Home Consortium Consolidated Plan. Which is in the process of being developed for the next five years, for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine fiscal years. And CDPG and HUD regulations and national objectives. Applicants were scored based on how well their proposals, proposed projects met this criteria. Staff presented to the Planning Commission on three separate occasions from June to August of this year. And Planning Commission has formally recommended this annual work plan with a greater number of housing and economic. Development projects as outlined in the proposed resolution. This approach aligns with the consolidated plans, council goals and HUD's focus on prioritizing housing initiatives. For the next few years to help address the housing crisis. The CDPG program remains vital to housing and community development and we look forward to continuing these efforts with council support. And I am happy to answer for any questions.
Thank you. Seeing no lights, I'll just ask one quick question, I think it's the one that we ask consistently, it seems that, you know, the administrations, uh, if I. Wanna ballpark at about twenty-eight percent, um, is there any way that, can you discuss what that entails? Where, where that money goes to and, um, you know, if there's any way that we could put maybe a little bit more back out at some point?
Are you talking about the program administration?
Uh, yes, yes, that first point or line item.
So with the program admini- administration, we can only allocate twenty percent. That currently right now is at nineteen percent of the allocation. That goes to staff. The staff person, their salary benefits, um, if there's any training, if there's any outreach that we need to do. Uh. Stuff like that.
Mister Mayor, um, I think I could illustrate a little bit more on that as well. Um, there's, uh, certain grants that are incredibly difficult to manage and time-consuming. And I would say HUD grants and CDPG grants are definitely one of them. Um, and so there is a complexity to it that, um, you look at that and you go, is that a full-time position? And unfortunately, in most jurisdictions, that is how it works out because of the, of the strings attached to the money. And all of the paperwork, uh, that is quite substantial, uh, unlike most other federal grants that we receive.
Thank you, and thank you for correcting my math on that, you know, try to do it on the back of the scratch pad and that's why I'm a lawyer, not a engineer. Um, and then just the other question I have is, is, uh, the debt repayment on the section one oh eight loan, can you, uh, express what we're using that for?
Uh, so in twenty eighteen, the city of Pasco applied for the section one oh eight loan to help with the. Revitalization of Peanuts Park. It was a three point seven million dollar loan for twenty years. And so for the next seventeen years, we will be contributing two hundred and fifty thousand to that debt payment.
Thank you. That's extremely helpful because I, uh, you know, now folks know where the big ticket art items are. Seeing no further lights, do we have any public, um, I mean, you're welcome. Uh, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you uh to both of you for attending and for your assistance and your efforts on this project. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item F, another resolution for discussion. That's. Yeah, the twenty twenty-five home annual work plan and allocations. I guess we're sticking with whatever, the superstar team here.
Miss Webb, take it away.
So on this, this are the home funds, so I'm here to provide an update on the allocation and the impact of the Department of Housing, Urban Development. Home prime, home program funds. These funds are vital to our city's growth and support various assistant programs. Benefiting our citizens. In nineteen ninety-six, Pasco entered into a home consortium agreement. With Kenit, Kennewick and Richland making us eligible for federal home funds. After administering and community housing development set asides, each city receives an equal share of the funds. Um, so I wanted to point out that a new initiative that has been brought on since I've been in this position is the. Owner occupied rehabilitation assistance, uh, using home funds to help eligible homeowners. We have completed our first home assistance in the amount of sixty-two thousand and are currently working on two more. Uh, homes. With the home funds though, in order to do a rehabilitation on a house. That house has to be brought up to current code standards. In the last five years, we provided a hundred and sixty thousand. In down payment assistance to applicants, helping making home ownership more accessible. And in September twenty twenty-four, the purchase limit for purchase for Pasco increased to existing homes. At three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and new construction at four hundred and two thousand. For rental assistance, we've supported a hundred and fifty-two families distributing five hundred and ninety-two thousand. To address housing needs particularly for those facing the greatest challenges. These programs reflect our dedication to addressing housing needs, promoting homeownership, and supporting families. We aim to ensure that our community's growth remains inclusive and that assistance reaches those who need it most. These are before and after pictures of the first home completed project. Several repairs were required to bring the house up to code, including painting and installing a handrail at the front steps. Replacing laminate flooring with hardwood hardwood to remove trip hazards and installing transitions from one room to the next. We also installed a new HVAC system, removed window air conditioners that blocked egress windows, replaced all the windows. And added smoked and carbon monoxide detectors. Additionally, a volunteer group helped by removing junked vehicles. Clearing deadwheezes or repairing the rear end fence, all at no cost to the homeowner. So Pasco's estimated entitlement share is, including program income for this year is. Or for twenty twenty-five is two hundred and sixteen thousand. For the budget, we have allocated ninety-eight thousand to. The owner occupied rehabilitation program, which will facilitate the upgrades of homes to meet current code standards. We expect to complete two of those projects. Additionally, we've earmarked ten thousand dollars for down payment assistance. Projecting to assist one purchase. Furthermore, ninety-eight thousand has been designated for tenant base rental assistance. With the consortium engaging with Community Action Connection to manage this program across the three cities. And finally, ten thousand is set aside for administrative staff cost. With that, I appreciate the council's support for these vital programs and look forward to our ongoing collaboration to best serve our city.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, I'm assuming that uh we're supportive of this program. Appreciate it, appreciate the. The work that you've consistently done to help our community, especially those in need.
Thank you.
With that, do we have any public comments on this item? Going once, going twice, third time? Alrighty, you're off the hook. With that, we move on, unless you want to take Deputy or Deputy City Manager Sigdel's tax presentation here. We got a item G, property and sales tax basics presentation, and it's gonna be Deputy City Manager Sigdel.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, and I will be brief. Um, this is just an introduction uh to property tax and sales tax. Uh, usually, uh, property taxes, we get the assessment uh from our assessor's office. In terms of what's the new construction, what's the assessed valuation around this time of the year. Uh, but given how complex our city is becoming. Um, it takes them a little bit longer now to make sure that they have the right numbers, and we want them to take their time. Because we don't want them to miss some of the growth uh that has happened over the years. So I do not have actual numbers for you, but I wanted to give you the concept of what it would look like. When um we do get those numbers and um and the process that we would go through. Next slide, please. Um, so at Valorem Tax, you will hear that, uh, sometimes in our resolutions, sometimes you'll hear myself or Director Buckley. Just kind of say that, it's just a fancy term for property tax. Uh, and there is a restriction in uh Washington State that you cannot increase property taxes. Uh, by more than one percent in a given year. Um, it feels like I'm lying because that's not how people experience their property taxes year to year. Um, so I just want to make sure that you all understand that I'm talking in context of the city. Uh, and there are different types of property taxes. If uh people voted in to increase property tax, that limit is not. Included. Um, there's also school bonds, uh, and that is not uh something that is included within that one percent. So the best way to think about it is if um nothing was built in the city of Pasco from one year to another. There was no growth, no homes, no businesses built, uh, and we were collecting a hundred dollars in property taxes. In the year before, we could only collect a hundred and one dollars the following year. So that is kind of how it works. Uh, and there's also another limit to that, which is that uh your inflation, uh, not quite your CPI. This is a different one, implicit price deflator, has to be more than one percent. And uh implicit price deflator, I don't think I could explain to you fully, but essentially, it's a little bit more robust than a CPI. And um it essentially, uh, the the law basically says that your inflation has to be higher than that one percent. For you to increase that one percent. And there's been few years uh where that implicit price deflator or the CPI. Uh, a different name for CPI, uh, has been less than one percent, and at that point, you're only allowed. To increase your property taxes by whatever that percentage is. Next slide, please. Um, we, I will talk about how our rates are going down and um and uh we do not increase our property taxes. By more than one percent, and so the question of, well, I don't feel that in my pockets. Um, so I wanted to show where your property tax goes, because you're paying to one uh entity, one government entity. And you're probably not looking at your property tax bill and and breaking it out on where it goes. Uh, forty-five percent of your uh property tax usually goes to the school district. Uh, twenty-nine percent goes to the state, uh, fourteen percent uh to the city, ten percent to the county. And three percent to other agencies like um our Port of Pasco. Uh, so this is kind of where where all of your money goes. Next slide, please. This graph is a, is a good example of um what is a history of the city's property tax and assessed valuation. Uh, the great news is, as of twenty twenty-three, uh, city of Pasco is the most highest assessed valuation. Valued city. Um, and in other terms, our land and buildings are the highest value. Compared to Kennewick or Richland, who we compare ourselves quite a bit with. Um, and um, so that's great news. Uh, the reason that our um property tax collections are not as much as Richland and Kennewick. Is because they were established before two thousand and one, more established. Uh, before two thousand and one, when that one percent limit came into play. So we've grown quite a bit mostly after two thousand and one. And so our property tax base got to grow with that limitation. Uh, whereas Kennewick and Richland had been established a little bit more before that timeframe. So property tax increases could happen in a different setting back then. Um, so you'll see the pro, the assessed valuation go up, and because we have a limit on how much we can grow our property taxes, which is the numerator. You see the rate go down. Um, so last year, our rate was uh a dollar. Uh, and something cents, seven cents, eight cents uh per thousand uh assessed valuation. So that is kind of how the city's portion of the property taxes work. And just as a reminder, there's other components of the property taxes that go to uh city, uh, that go to. Uh, state and go to the school district, go to the county, and so those are other rates that uh. That are not part of that one dollars. Next slide, please. We also have something called a banked capacity, and what this means is, um, there's been times, um, historically. Uh, where uh city of Pasco council has not uh increased the property tax rate by that one percent. That you're allowed to. So essentially, what you're saying is, I'm not going to increase it now, so I will bank it. Um, and you write that in your resolution, uh, you file it with the county, and then county files it with Department of Revenue. And that's kind of how that goes, and it gets out of our hands. Um, currently, um, we have uh six hundred thousand dollars in our bank capacity in our bank essentially. Uh, but this is all make-believe money. Um, you don't really have it till you go to get it. Um, and um, I'd be remiss if I did not say that. Um, there's a lack of control there that I struggled with as a former finance director. Where in the past, we have lost our bank capacity, and it's been really hard to get it back. So I, I want to put that asterisk in in that six hundred thousand dollars. Um, because we've lost, we were at the risk of losing. Uh, almost one point six million dollars every year back in two thousand and eighteen, and it was pure luck on our part. That we were able to get it back, and it becomes difficult because it's the assessor's office and the Department of Revenue. Uh, that are the main players in this, and we're a little bit out of the loop. Uh, we have great relationship with the assessor's office, um, and um. Trust them implicitly, but we all make mistakes, um, and so does the state, so that's. I, I just want to make sure that you're all aware that when we're banking our property taxes, there's, there's always a risk that. It's not going to be there when you need it.
If, if we can stop here, let's just break that element down, because it sounds scary for, for me and for probably the everyday man and woman. So the bank capacity exists when the city foregoes increasing your property tax. It's the added value that would have occurred had you increased that one percent, correct? And now, when we quote lose the bank capacity, what triggers that? Or is, is it lost value in, in your revenue source, meaning housing prices go down? Or is it some other um external, external, you mentioned, um. What was it, DOR, Department of Revenue or um outside entities? How exactly do we lose that? Um, such that we wouldn't be able to capitalize on that?
So last time we lost it, it was via a couple of audits. Uh, and uh, one of the big ones was where there was an um, an error. With transposing of numbers, and uh Department of Revenue basically said, well. This, this form that the assessor's office files, um, there's an error. There was an audit, and they said, no, you, city of Pasco does not have this bank capacity anymore. Because we're not party to that audit, we don't have the seat at the table to argue. Uh, we were lucky in that it took, took us about eighteen months to actually get all of the documents, figure out what the issue was. But we were able to work with the assessor's office and really be able to identify that it was just a transposing error. And really, city of Pasco should not be punished for, you know, when you really think about net value of money over. The life of the city, that's billions of dollars, right? Every year, it's one point six million, that grows by one percent. So it really gets reduced if there's an error via audits by Department of Revenue.
Thank you, and and hopefully that helps make the mud somewhat more clear. Um, it, it's a very complex issue, but I think the bottom line is, for those listening, it's not like we're actually gonna lose six hundred thousand dollars. As you mentioned, it's kind of, it's um potential money that we could utilize uh to be expended elsewhere in the city's budgetary process. Um, and again, we, we do this by foregoing, you know, raising costs essentially.
That is correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a little bit of a worksheet that you will see, um, and I apologize, number, it's, it's a wall of numbers. But uh what you will see when we come back with actual numbers, and the ones on red are new construction, assessed valuation. Um, all of this will impact what our rate will be. Um, I'm kind of making my best guess, but there's been so much. It's hard uh for a very good reason to trend at the city of Pasco, uh, because we've grown so much over the years that. Um, and we've had some big industries come in that kind of become the one-off. Uh, but you're looking at, from my estimation, again, it'll change, but you're looking at what, what is the current rate? Which is that one dollar and eight cents per thousand assessed valuation. If we just added uh just new construction and you banked that one percent, you're looking at about two cents. A decrease in rate. Um, if you added that one percent increase and, and just took that increase. You're looking at about thirteen uh cents um decrease in rate. Uh, but if you decided to sweep the bank capacity, which I would say like just take the bank capacity that you've had over the years. Then it increases the rate by about three cents. Um, just uh. Showing you what you, you will see when we get the actual numbers, but the new constructions and the assessed valuations are just estimates. Uh, on this screen, but I wanted to kind of show you the math that you should expect coming up here soon. Any questions on this slide? Uh, I apologize, this is truly an accountant's slide, but um we'll, we'll try to make it a little bit better next time. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so you'll see what I, what I spoke on here of um our comparison with, with our neighbors. And uh the fact that assessed valuation of Pasco's um buildings and land. Is over twelve billion dollars, and it truly speaks to how far we've come. And um, and we're collecting about last year about thirteen million dollars in property taxes. Uh, Kennewick is close second, both uh Kennewick and Richland are close second to us. And uh they collect fifteen and twenty, twenty-one million dollars respectively. Um, and really, it is because of um the fact that we've grown so quickly. And after that limitation to the increase in property taxes, that we're collecting a lot less than the other cities. Even though our value, valuation is a lot higher. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm moving on to sales tax. Uh, do you have any questions on the property tax that? Uh, okay, sales tax, actually, you know, a better tax because at least you're buying something that you want, right? Um, but um, it's taxed nonetheless. Uh, when you pay about eight point nine percent at the city of Pasco. Uh, I just wanna uh say that not all of that goes to the city. Um, only about one percent goes to the city, and it's, it's an estimate because public safety and criminal justice. Is split between city and county in a way that is not um uniform, as in, you know, some does per capita. Of all of the cities that are within the county, and so it spreads money i- in a little bit different manner. But essentially, one percent comes back to the city, so that's kind of how it works. Next slide, please. And uh, this is a, a sales tax profile, which I think is a really, the most important slide uh for sales taxes. This is where most of our sales tax comes from, retail trade being forty-seven percent. And then you'll see construction, uh, which is a key one, which is seventeen percent. Uh, this is from twenty twenty-three, and we had some pretty big construction happening at the city of Pasco. So you will see, you know, Dairy Gold, Amazon, when they're getting built. Um, those are big construction projects, and so you will see the fluctuation in your construction sales tax. Um, and uh in the past, when uh our biggest construction um sales tax generators. Used to be high schools and schools just overall, uh, but now we're getting a lot. Uh, but now we're getting a lot more complex things. We're learning things like, you know, with um uh with some of the industrial. Uh, expansions that manufacturing equipment does not get any sales tax, they're sales tax exempt, so. We have to kind of learn those complexities as we're getting um new businesses. And the retail trade um is um all of your um small businesses, your um. Walmarts, yolks, um and uh anything that they sell that is non grocery. But another big component of that is our auto sales. We have quite a big base, which is great. Um, so of that forty seven uh percent, half of that is about. Uh, about forty four, forty or forty four percent is auto sales. It's it's a great thing, but it's also something that as a former former finance director, I would always keep an eye on. Because that is a very sensitive uh market. Uh, we have been luckily. Um, recession proof-ish in this whole region. Um, but um. People don't buy combines, people don't buy cars when they're hearing bad news. Uh, all across, uh, you know, on on their television sets, so. Um, something that we really keep an eye on um and making sure that our revenue projections account. Uh, for that industry as well. Next slide, please. This is a a history of our uh regular sales tax. You will hear me say. Regular sales tax and then there's public safety sales tax and. Uh, criminal justice sales tax. So there's three different types of sales tax that come to the city. Uh, we try to separate this because um criminal justice and public safety. Um, there's other factors that can impact it, but right now not as much because City of Pasco is the biggest city within Franklin County. Uh, but that could change as other cities' population grows in the county as well. Um, so you'll see a a pretty robust growth, I believe between two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty three, our growth was. More than fifty four percent, fifty five percent. Um. Uh, since two thousand sixteen, I know it's been eighty one percent. You'll see a drop from twenty twenty three because that was a peak year. There was also a lot of construction sales tax that we have to kind of adjust for once those projects are over. Um, and um, if you remember, when the budget was passed for this biennium. Uh, that would be the fall of twenty twenty two. And when you think about fall of twenty twenty two. Interest rates were still fairly low. Um, and um, economy. Um, had not been um as bad as maybe the last year was. And so there was a lot more optimism um that hasn't quite come to fruition, but hopefully it will in the next year here. Uh, but that's why we're kind of adjusting our projections a little bit uh for for this year. Uh, the uh, next slide, please. Uh, public safety and criminal justice sales tax kind of follows a similar trend as well. Um, and uh, we're going to bring back once we get uh our final or not final preliminary. Um, assessment numbers from uh our assessor's office will come back to you. There will be a public hearing. For the property sales tax and then we'll also go through all of the general uh fund revenue. Uh, sales tax as well as all of the expenses. So we're kind of hoping to get those numbers at the end of this month and be able to come back to you. Um, but we're gonna, but I'm not quite sure if we will do that or or we'll we'll be able to get those numbers at this time. And that's my presentation and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just thank you for your presentation there. Um. Deputy Si- City Manager Sigdell. Um, I guess the biggest eye opener to me was the comparison you provided. Of the assessed valuation of our property now being higher than our neighbors across the creek, but yet. The property tax rate is that much lower and what that does. Obviously, you know, there there's no doubt that's got to be a strain here on services and you can see the population, we're just. That close to being the biggest of the three and so. Just to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly, like Richland has such a higher property tax rate. I assume because they have the oldest infrastructure and it's just really had the opportunity to build over such a long period of time. Versus our rapid growth, is that the main difference there?
Uh, that's part of it, but uh I do not know the exact history for the city, but. There might have been levy lid lifts where people voted to increase taxes. And I'm not aware of that history on how they got there, but that would be a a safe assumption to make.
Okay, I appreciate that. And also thank you for clearing up um some things because I know the city gets blamed sometimes for raising property tax rates. So I appreciate some of ver- at the very beginning of your presentation, clearing some of those things up, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Uh, seeing no further lights, uh, do we have any public comment on this issue? I know we got a tax us tax expert sitting out there somewhere. Hearing none, going once, going twice, third time. With that, we have finished that section section of our agenda and we'll move on to item number six. Thank you for that presentation, Miss Sigdell. Item six is miscellaneous council discussion. Do we have anything from the city staff first?
Yes, we we have uh three quick items. Uh, as always, Director of Fund has a couple. Um, but I would also like to remind council that next week is the fifth Monday, so there is no council meeting, so just. Make sure you have a reminder, um, so you know that you have your Monday free.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just two more quick items then this evening. Uh, first one, I was gone last Monday, uh, so wasn't able to. Uh, do a wrap up of the Fire Foods Festival, so I'm here to do this this evening, so. Wanted to say that it was a great event. I appreciate all the council members that attended, uh, Councilman Peralis for torturing himself with his taste bud test on the peppers. Um, and again, here are some pictures of the event, um, which we had our VIP pepper eating contest, our taco eating contest and. Community pe- uh, community pepper eating contest as well. Those seemed all very well attended, lots of lots of crowds cheering everyone on. Um, and of course, um, some of our other events and and our sponsors uh up there on stage. And then, of course, all of our sponsors and all of our partners that helped make this possible. So we appreciate all those and helping those extend our events out to reach as many of those in the community as possible. Um, and then another event coming up this Sunday is our Ray Foundation footsal courts, which if I'll remind you that we are partnered with the Ray Foundation. To install two footsal courts, uh, one at Highlands Park and one at Kersman Park, so the. Ray Foundation and the City of Pasco will be uh doing a grand opening of those uh on Sunday at Kersman Park. Uh, between one and four P M and uh we're expecting a lot of different activities going on at that time. Uh, we have a ceremonial first kick, we have some alumni. Past players and uh coaches coming out to do uh drills, food trucks with prepaid food tickets for, I think, the first five hundred people that include a. A lunch and a dessert, as I understand, uh, as well as handing out two hundred and fifty free soccer balls for the kids. So we look forward to seeing everyone in the community out there to participate those and activate those courts. That's what I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, uh, Ms. Barra.
Oh, thank you. Um, you took you took my my talking point, Director of Fund. I'm joking. Um, so I did neglect to share that I I attended the District One Business Watch Meeting. Last week, there was about thirty um uh business owners and actually Councilwoman Blaisdell was there with me. Um, it I think it was a a productive conversation. Uh, obviously, the issues. Um, tend to revolve around homelessness and those issues and how it's affecting the business owners. But thankfully, we had um several police officers there that were able to guide. Um, um, the attendees as as to how to go about reporting. Um, and and obviously, you know, watching out for each other, each other's businesses. Uh, there's a group of um. Business owners that were going to compile some information or research for us. Basically, what I what I encouraged everyone there was um. We we represent you as community members. We represent you as business owners in the City of Pasco. But we don't know a lot of things that you're seeing, that you hear um and and go through. So I would I would again advise everyone, I would coach everyone, if you're having any issues and you live in District One. Or District Two, anywhere in the City of Pasco, please don't be afraid to report that to um your local police department. Pasco Police Department. Um, there's um, they have information for you. There's an app, Ask Pasco app, that you can report anything that you see, unless it's an emergency, please dial nine one one immediately. Um, but um, there's also another meeting going on for District Two happening. Uh, tomorrow, actually, at the Goat Apartments on Burns Road from one to two. Uh, another community meeting for District One happening on the tomorrow at Moose Lodge, six to seven. Um, and District Two meeting twenty sixth from six to seven at the Grange Hall. So there's several opportunities for our community members to get involved. Uh, bring your issues, bring your concerns, suggestions. And, you know, again, we we're not perfect, we have day jobs, we try to uh be everywhere. We always can't. So it takes up to you, camera. I'm looking at the camera, everyone, five people that are watching. Uh, please, 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 don't be afraid to re- to report that to us, use the Ask Pasco app. Um, there's a lot of great staff that are able to answer a lot of your questions. There's. Uh, fire department, there's police department. Again, that can guide you as to um what what are the next steps to follow. Um, one last invite again. Uh, mock interviews, October eighteenth. Any council members, if you've not participated before. I would advise that you do. It's super fun. It helps kids. Steph has done it before. Uh, several officers have done it. Um, I don't know about fire department. I know Ben Shear has been out there, but I would invite fire department and any business owners. If you have any coaching, any mentoring that you are willing to share with high school students. Take the opportunity, October eighteenth, seven thirty to two thirty P M at Chioana High School. Reach out to uh Superintendent Michelle Whitney. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barra, Ms. Grim.
Mr. Mayor, real briefly, um, even before our conversation a little earlier, I wanted to commend the deputy city manager and director Sarah to you. They have s- had three meetings with me today spanning nearly six hours. Don't feel bad for me, feel bad for them. But I just wanted to commend them to you and I appreciate them pouring their hearts into making Pasco the great place we call home. And just investing in me, equipping me to be a better advocate for our city. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Seeing no further lights, I guess that moves us on to the dreaded next section, which is executive session. Now, the great news is tonight there is none required. I know, I just thought I'd keep you on your toes. Uh, and then this brings us on to section number eight, which is the best. It is nine twenty two, nine twenty three now. We are now adjourned. Thank you for joining us.